This video is brought to you by Commercial Bank. Visit commercial-bank.net. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
Call the meeting to order officially at the Warren City Council, October the 15th, 2024. This is the regular monthly meeting of the council. First item of business is to call the roll. I ask the city clerk to do that, please.
Councilmember Marshall?
Here.
Councilmember Chris Fraser?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Tolfree?
Present.
Councilmember Mosley?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins?
Here.
Okay, 100% attendance, thank you. Appreciate everybody being here. First, other item of business, item four, approval of the minutes of our meeting of September the 9th of 2024. You have those, the council has those minutes in their packets.
I move that the minutes for September 9th be approved as emailed and hard copy received.
Second, how do you? Thank you. Got motion and second, I believe, from Mr. Tolfree. All right, council members, any questions, discussions, corrections, anything to the minutes of September the 9th? If not, all in favor of approval, let be known by show of hands, please. I see six votes in favor and none opposed. All right, city clerk's report, I've got several things there. Start with your regular financial report, if you'd go ahead. And you'll be giving them the year-to-date numbers, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, this will be the year-to-date through September.
Okay, administrative expenses, $311,612 in one sense. Law enforcement was $1,501,037.10. Sanitation, $810,428.8 cents. Building codes, $20,170.99 cents. District court, $83,293.61 cents. Municipal building, $10,751.95 cents. Recreation, $216,184.63 cents. Cultural center, $9,124.73 cents. Armory, $13,929.31 cents. Shooting range, $38,792.32 cents. Senior citizens center was $6,192.89 cents. Other was $25,320.20 cents. Airport expense, $25,958.91 cents. Economic development, $21,786.52 cents. And streets was $503,447.89 cents.
Of course, all the line items on there, council members, y'all can look at all of that if you need to, see where each call expenditure were made.
Move that we approve the statement of revenue and expenditures that's given by the city clerk.
Motion's made. Councilmember Henderson, seconded the council, new to Mosley to approve the report as presented. Questions or discussion on any part of it? Any categories, line items, anything? All those in favor of approval, show of hands, please. I see six votes in favor, zero opposed. Go ahead with the rest of it. You got your cash balances report there, too.
And the Bradley County District Board, it's in there? The city sales tax for September was $85,646.17 cents. And the county sales and use tax was $60,729.13 cents.
And I believe you've got an overtime report. Everybody got that? This is for the quarter, for the last three months. Things there that we're going to have to address in the future, we'll be talking about that as it goes on. Of course, y'all are aware that police department is running like it is. We are still minus four police officers. We need police officers just now.
Does the system that we're using allow you to do from January up until this point as a legislative? Can we have a copy of that as well for the Ways and Means?
Thank you.
When do you think we can get it?
We'll get it in the morning. Is that soon enough?
Sure, that's fine. More than enough. We won't need before that time.
Just before the Ways and Means committee.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or anything on any of the financial reports? Please look at those very carefully. We talked about a lot, some of that stuff in the very near future, sort of, we put the budget together and look at the financial situation that we're past moving forward. That'll bring us to item six, the mayor's report. And the first thing that we want to do is we've got a little presentation to make tonight. And I'm going to ask Mr. Mike Miller if he would step forward and he can bring his wife with him. I see that she's back there. And he is the employee of the quarter for the city of Warren. We'll let the media get a picture, whatever they want to do here. Rob, you might want to step in here, too, since he works for you. Let's get right out here in front. How's that?
We just wanted to, of course, city councils implement a program of doing this every three months. We differ, a person, employee is chosen just for having done a good job, being dedicated, being dependable. Mike works for the solid waste department, what we call sanitation, is our garbage pickup collection system, but also our recycling program, which we do have one. We're trying to expand it.
He's been working real hard on that. We want to make recycling a bigger thing. And the reason for that, Mike, is because it saves us money. Because when we don't have landfill something, the taxpayers come out ahead. And we can sell a lot of that recyclable material. We're talking about cardboard, talking about regular paper and things like that. So Mike has come on board. How long you been with us now?
About three years.
About three years. But he's come on board. He can do a little bit of everything, but he's just a good employee. He's dedicated, he tends to business. And we're trying to pile more on him as time goes on. So we want to give you a gift card. And your wife may swap, you know, grab that out of your hand there before you get started. But we just want to thank you for everything you have done and hope you'll continue to do.
Appreciate it.
Rob, you want to say anything?
Mike's done a great job. As long as he's been here, he's done, checked today, just to double check. A little over 169 tons, 169,000 tons of cardboard that he has kept out of the landfill. He's on top of it. His nickname's cardboard, if you see. He hardly let it hit the ground. But Mike does anything you ask him to do, the city asks him to do, he does it. And just a great person to work with.
You want to say anything else? Well, I should add just one other thing. We are going to expand our recycling program. City council's been working on some things. I was going to announce it later. We got a grant just recently, about $12,000. We're going to put a new drop-off center over on Rock Street, near the swimming pool over there, for that side of town. And because we're going to need a lot of people to bring the stuff to us, clean cardboard, paper, that type of thing. Try to keep it out of our regular garbage streams so we don't have to pay for landfilling it, because that is expensive. So with that, we'll let y'all take a picture. Rob, you're in there. Oh, I'm sorry, anybody else? That's okay. All right, this is a foot for me. Thank you very much, we appreciate you. Thank you. I'm sorry. Is he still there? He's going to come back. Let the city council forget. Yeah, I'll get y'all. I don't know what I was thinking, but it wasn't right.
I'll talk about it later in my report. You can probably yell at him.
City council, we don't get a picture. Y'all get up there with him. He's here. I'm going to take for a second. Y'all get up there.
I'll come back in, y'all get.
Come on, y'all get up there and let y'all get another picture with the city council. I'll stay out of this because I messed up. I'm sorry. I apologize.
You know, but can Rob come back? And I think you should come back, too.
Get her in, buddy.
Okay, I'll get her. Rob Johnson, where's Rob Johnson? She not going to come back? We squeeze in here, is this good enough?
We got to turn, y'all turn sideways.
Rob's going to take one more. It's my fault, I'm sorry. All right, thank you all. Too big a hurry, my fault. Thank you all, because this is a city council approved program and we appreciate that very much. Okay. All right, next item on the agenda for council consideration, should have a copy of a letter from the Chamber of Commerce asking that she close West Cypress Street and some of Main Street for the fall festival on Saturday, October 26th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m.
I make a motion, close the street, subscribe to it from Chamber of Commerce for the times that they specify.
Got a motion and a second. Does that, council member Atkins, second? Question or discussion? This is fairly routine, but just, that's really okay, is it? Okay, all those in favor, show of hands? I see six in favor, so that takes care of that. Next thing is, this is a renewal of something we've been doing several years. This is the contract with the Jolly Light Company. That's the folks that store and then put up and take down all the Christmas lights for us. You've got a letter there, it's $5,700, but it does need to be renewed if you want that to continue to be done.
I move that we accept the invoice from Jolly Lights with $5,711.83. Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Call the council member Henderson, seconded. Question or discussion? I think y'all know what this is all about.
It's the re, the company that we started with?
Yes, sir. Same folks, and you bid it out last year and then you decided to stay with this company. Okay. All in favor, show of hands? I see six in favor, takes care of that. Appointment to adjustments and appeals board, we've got a vacancy there that was caused by Mr. Bill Taylor's passing. And matter of fact, you never even got to attend the meeting because that board doesn't beat off unless it's an appeal, some building code or something is made. I'm nominating or recommending Mr. Floyd Brown, who lives over on Bond Street, to that position.
I believe that Mr. Floyd Brown be added to the commission of adjustments and appeals.
Okay. Got a motion, second? You got both of them? Okay, question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands? I see six in favor, thank you. Now, the last item under my report is the solar land, Warren School District. Now, council's aware of all this and hopefully most people are. Of course, we've got to under contract to build a solar facility, the city is. So happens, the Warren School District is also under contract with the same company to build one. And they're wanting to put part of theirs, six acres out there with ours at the industrial park, our industrial park. This will be land south of the water tank. Y'all familiar with where that is? Go down the end of the road where the cul-de-sac is, the water tank, there's a water well down there. There's some land out in there that's not the best land we got for industrial development anyway. It's only about 10 acres, I think, left. Ours is going to take, you know, two or three acres and they, the school, they would be built separately and fenced in separately, although they would be right there beside each other. In talking with the school board, they prefer to buy the property, not lease it, because this is obviously a long-term thing, just buy from us. They basically want to know what the city council would want for six acres of that land, even though it would be right there beside ours. And I don't have an information on what it's appraised for, I probably need to check that. But I think what they want to know right now is, are you willing to sell them six acres of it for their... This would not be their entire facility. They've got another location where, theirs is going to be a lot bigger than ours, because of the very nature of the school district. Y'all have any thoughts about that?
That we refer to the community and economic development activity.
Okay. Without objection, anybody opposed to that? Let them look at it and report back.
And that the administration see appraisal.
Sure, sure, we'll get what it's appraised for. I think we ought to try to work with them if we can, because I think it's a good thing for the student tax payer as well. Okay, very good. We'll do that based on your recommendations.
Do you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, Mr. Tolfree.
Well, since we started these two projects, everything's been timed essentially. And we've tried to always come under the wire. Would this apply to the same thing, to continuation of finishing?
Well, we've just got to tell them something before, yes, you're right, because there is some time schedules on this, but I think we got a little bit of time to talk about it and then make a decision. I would hope we wouldn't try to charge them too terribly much.
We need to see what the appraisal is.
See what the appraisal is. And, you know, since it's a tax-funded organization, try to help them out as much as we can. But your point's well taken, Mr. Tolfree, so we will need to move on pretty quick.
You have a question? Okay.
Everybody good? Okay. All right, council members? Anybody here need to recognize someone to speak? Council member Atkins?
Mr. Janice Rochelle, this is Janice Rochelle, this is Carol McCoy.
All right, Ms. Rochelle, why don't you come first? If you don't mind, come up here where everybody can see you here good. When she gets through, then Mr. Floyd, you can just follow them.
I have one in there.
Okay.
Mr. Harley, Billy Harley.
Okay, very good. Just take them in a word there. Rochelle, you are recognized.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Great mayor and beautiful city council members. I'm here in concerns of the increase that is supposed to be proposed, possibly for sanitation, $2 increase, but less pickup. I spoke to several residents in our city and we opposed that. And I've also spoken to the people that used to work for the sanitation department. And they said that that's not going to work in this city. And so I'm asking you all if that is presented, that you refuse to vote that in, because you have to think about the residents of this great city. A lot of retired people, a lot of elderly people, and it just, the math just doesn't add up. You want to increase $2, but less pickup, one pickup a week. And after speaking to that retired employee, they said that just simply not going to work. Because when they were working, they worked several hours in this city. And it was very hard on them and they had two-day pickups. And they also shared with me that they worked eight hours, they were sand eight hours, but they only worked six, they finished up at 12 o'clock every day. I know our great mayor, I mentioned him and Rob, that their contract work out. You know, mowing and putting up sands and all that. So I asked, where is the equipment? Does the city of Warren have the equipment to even mow? Does the city of Warren even have the trucks to do this one-day pickup? How much of these trucks are going to cost? And also another concern, a man, I formed my own committee, cleaning up Warren. And I was told that after filling out the complaint forms, Mr. Rob Johnson, I went to check on my neighbor, not knowing my neighbor was mad at me. He jeopardized my life. Because I went to check on my neighbor just to see how he was doing and my neighbor was looking at me like he's ready to shoot me. And he said, you know, you got a lot of people mad at you. And mad at me. He said, did you turn us in here to clean up our lots? And so I had to tell my neighbor that I wasn't going to apologize for that, because we shouldn't have to be made to clean up our lots. But what concerns me is Mr. Rob Johnson told me that the city council, and I'd like to know if this true, that the city council told him not to ride around wasting city gas. City gas checking on lots, but let us come up and fill out the complaint forms to get these cities, get the different lots cleaned up. And I'd just like to know why would you jeopardize my life? I don't even know things going on, but my name is being thrown, I'm being thrown under the bus for something that Mr. Rob has hired to do. So maybe you all can address that and see why would we have to, why would our name have to be exposed like this? When it caused the value of our property to depreciate, when I believe it's Section 936, Section 1, talking about how the grass is over 10 inches tall? So I would like to know if it's a city ordinance, why would you have to expose the people that's filling out the complaint forms to try to beautify our city? And it also caused the value of our homes to depreciate, and it's also a safety issue. My husband has cancer. He went to start up his motorcycle. And if he hadn't had his hair days in, that's why I knew it was God. He raised the cover and a snake fell in the chair. And it was a copperhead snake. And then we saw a mice in the house. We didn't have a hordeies, but due to the high grass and the way the neighborhood is looking, trash everywhere, trees, it's like a forest in my neighborhood. And so I'm asking you all to please address that issue. Why do our name have to be exposed? Just because we want to beautify our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Ms. McCoy?
Good evening, my name is Carol McCoy. And my concern is law trucks and motor trucks coming through the neighborhood. Good speech. Stop. And they're jay breaking. And I'm asking if we could help that stop or put a sign up for the motor trucks and law trucks stop jay breaking. I think that's what I want. And then another thing, I talked to the mayor, we talked about it on Phillips Street. And I've been fighting this issue for a long time. It's on the corner of Philip and Etheridge. And it's on the corner, it's on Rock Street, at the end of Rock Street to St. James. Those houses have been vacant, abandoned, whatever you want to call them, yet years. And I have been asking for a long time for that to be cleaned up. And those people, the people that own the land is in California. And that's the Matthews, Matthews property. And also, I had a request to, I had cut some limbs in my yard. And I had a request for them to pick up, that was last week. And they told me they were coming Thursday. I let them go Friday because that was homecoming. But I called again today, they said they was coming out, but it's not there. And they told me it's got to be, so we're feet from the street. And I have a ditch dividing the street and the limbs are right at the edge of the ditch.
What's the address on that, Ms. McCoy?
308 Noah Gethier Street.
Okay, I'll check on that.
And I appreciate it if we can do something about it.
Okay. Council member Marshall, you have somebody? Do you have the floor, Mr. Harley?
How you doing? How you doing this afternoon?
All right.
My concern is about the trash pickup. And I'm retired now, on a fixed income. And a lot of people in this town, I've been cutting hair, I've cut hair for almost 30 years. And a lot of people are really mad about this. You know, a lot of people on fixed income, you know, like I say, they got a big millage of school. They paying taxes on that, student register and stuff went up. And like I said, you're going to cut down trash pickup for one, pickup one day and go up on the race. So I mean, I'm out.
I'm going to tell you why that is in a minute, because that's not the whole story.
Yeah, but then what's it going to go up next? The water, the water going to go up, the water bill going to go up?
Problem.
It's just a little change. You know, people, people are being taxed to death. And people, people are really upset about it. You know, like a lot, a lot of elderly people, like my parents, they, my parents 80, my dad's 85, my mom's 82. You know, they can't hardly take no trash out. I heard something about going to put up some big trash cans, so they can't push no big old trash cans out on the side of the road to pick up no trash. So that's what, that's my concern. I think, I think it's a bad idea. Because, you know, this is an election year, things are tight, and we don't know which way this election is going to go. So, you know, that's my concern. And there's a lot of other people concerned. I'll go with that. I'll go with all that, so.
Council members, y'all got anybody else? Does anybody sign in to speak? Has anybody? All right, Dr. Bob Smalling, who is the chairman or president of the Bradley County Development Commission Board. That's some business that is on the agenda later, under the Ways and Means Committee. But he wants to address, speak at this time. You're recognized, doctor.
Well, I'd like to let you know that I have my executive, part of my executive committee, Paul Davis Secretary here. He couldn't be without a town, so he couldn't be here. And then I saw David McDermott came in off our board, too. I think we've been here years ago, I think like years ago. We're talking about running out of industrial land and we have officially done that. As of tonight, when you take out those last acres from the industrial parks officially full, the city of Warren has no industrial property to attract anyone for more jobs in the community. We are dealing with a person now who's looking at the land that you're looking at. We've been negotiating with him for about a year or so. He's looking for something on the highway, on the railroad. If you look for highway railroad land in Bradley County, there's only one strip that's available and that's what y'all are negotiating for at this point. If we want the best industrial land, the only industrial land that really meets most requirements, we really need to go through with this purchase. I understand that we've, there may be some situation with the lease with us. Our board is on, has taken two different motions. They have authorized the executive committee to finalize the discussions and finalize the negotiations and sign off on this project. They're totally and completely in agree with what the concept is that you're putting out. So if there's anything we can do to help, we're here to help. With that, I just, you know, that's, the main thing is to let you know that we're fully behind this. And we think it's a good deal. We think it's the only way we can go if we want to advance the city. Right now, adjacent to that land that you're looking at, we have 69 acres on option to an industry right now who has asked us to also try to, we've also got land to expand the railroad tracks. This company needs 150 railcar storage. Storage for 150 railcars. That's, that's two miles of railroad siding, which we have the land to do. We have the drawings and everything else to make that happen. So that's adjacent to this other land that we're talking about, but also runs right along that land also. So that, those sidings will also work on this new land that's. So that, those sidings will also work on this new land that's coming up. Uh, but, uh, we're, we're very excited about the possibilities and, and I wish, uh, uh, well, the options are just, just the only option we have. If we miss this option, I don't know what we'll do and going for industrial property.
Thank you. All right, let's see here, uh, Ms. Phillips? Yeah, yeah. So I lost you there for a minute, I'm sorry. And then Mr. Matthews, you be next.
It's okay.
Uh, this, sign in, sheet's closed. This is, this is it.
Oh, I'll do that next time, 'cause I'm, I'm doing this.
You sign in on the, on the sheet there. Go ahead, you're recognized.
Yeah, no, mayor, city council, I'm up here in, um, trying to see where we are on twenty millimeter street right there.
For?
Paying.
Oh. Well, the streets for this year have been paved, but they were approved by the city council. And, uh, so we'll have, you know, look at, next year, basically, is what we're looking at, uh, at this point, yes ma'am. We've just, we just spent two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for street paving, about six streets. That's another one of our problems, amount of money that, that's costing, but no. Now, we done been through all that for twenty twenty-four. Council met, they approved the, the streets to be paved, we bid it out, they've been paved, so there's not any, any other paving scheduled until the next round.
Okay, who is my cap- who is my citizen?
Well, 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 ma'am, the thing about it is, they come up here and they was talking about the street paving, they were gonna, we was gonna put them on the list, but then it was put up a holdup because y'all was gonna do that channel down there behind it.
Yeah, and we're, and we're working on that, and we're almost ready to go. I had one of the people that, you're talking about the, the drainage ditch, right?
That's real, what they said, it was healed up.
Remember that, Ms. Phillips, the drainage ditch? Well, I got the, I got the easements, uh, I got the easements prepared, had it surveyed, got it prepared. Well, the owner of one of the properties has decided now they don't want an open ditch through there. They want a culled ditch. And that's held us back. We gotta get some more, more work. We're ready to cut it. We're ready to do it, but the lady, the lady that lives in Eldorado that owns one of the houses. And, uh, she has come and said that she does not want an open ditch cut through there. She don't mind the easement for a drainage, but that changes everything because of the graves and so forth. We gotta figure out what we can do, if we can run it off that way. The other lady, this is between two houses, you know where I'm talking about. The other lady told me she would be, I went out and talked to her, she said she'd come in, sign the easement, she's never shown. I personally talked to her. I'm gonna have to get back with her, but I, I was trying to get the easements, but the other one won't sign until we promise her we're not gonna just have a drainage ditch there. It's not gonna be very big, even if that, but, so that's what I'm trying to get solved now.
So what can we do to make it?
Well, as far as the drainage ditch, you can't do anything unless those two property, 'cause we're going across private property with it, which is where it's gotta go. Uh, unless you can just talk them into going ahead and seconding the easement so we can get it done. We'd have had it done a long time ago, whatever that. I'd be glad to visit with you if you'd like for me to, after this, and see get a other explain to you on, on the drainage problem, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, that she was on the front of the list to be paved, but it was instructed not to pave it until we got the ditch done.
But we gotta have easements for those two property.
Well, if they're not gonna do that, we might as well just go ahead and pave it anyway. 'Cause there's a lot of other bad areas with drainage.
You may, you may have some flooding issues if you do.
We already have that.
Yeah, but you may still have it. Can't run the water off.
We already have that. My husband, he was driving, I thought he, and looked up broad. You got those crisscrosses around and circle that.
Would you be will to let me visit with you about that and see what we can do? If I could get those easements, we'll have that done in no time.
And you know how we feel about our grandkids?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
And my grandkids, when they come down in, in the summertime, I got one from way Canada. She can't ride her bicycle or nothing as she used to because of that.
I understand.
And she's a two-minute, but I can't bring her, so me and her.
I will get back with you and see if you can help to get those easements done, okay?
I'm very disappointed. I'm very disappointed.
It is illegal for the city to cut that ditch if we don't have an easement.
Okay.
That's what we're running to.
Would it be make, would it be better? Yeah, would you reach out to the property, but I don't know.
I will.
I don't know who the person is.
I will.
I, 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 I'll get with you. I got the numbers and everybody.
Reach out to that person?
Yeah.
And talk to them?
We will.
Yes, ma'am. I, I, I'll get with you, we'll kinda get updated on all that.
Yes. If somebody should have been up, told me about this and I could've been working on it. You visited one time.
Yes, ma'am. I've visited in person with both of the property owners. And then she, one of them proved to be her, so I'll, I'll, we won't, won't give her more work done, so I gotta.
I, I rang them up here at last.
Okay, thank you. They have to get you through that, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Matthews?
Well, look, I ain't gonna hold y'all up there, but, uh, I'm in agreement with, uh, with Janice was talking about the sanitary and, and hard and, and some. I'm interested in why that should work for you.
Hang around just a little bit, and I'm gonna explain some of that to you. Try to anyway, okay, what's going on? All right, that's all we got on, on, uh, public comments, yes?
I move that we, I make a motion that we, um, go into executive session for personnel matters.
Second.
All right, motion's made, seconded, uh, go into executive session. All in favor, show of hands. Okay, six in favor. Uh,
Session.
Okay, council member Henderson moves that the council will return to a regular session, seconded by Mr. Tollfree. You got that? All right. All those in favor, show of hands, please. I see six in favor. Uh, no action to be announced, or taken by the city council, it's just a personnel discussion. Okay, uh, let me see where we are here. We've gone through all the public comments. Yes, ma'am, we are down number seven. Police chief. Chief Eldred, come in, they've got your report, but tell me anything else you need to go over.
Good evening, everyone. As usual, I believe you have my report. I don't think it depicts anything unusual, it's been pretty much business as usual at the police department, um, been taken away. Um, I would like to make it all of a couple things from my report. Is that we are, far like equipment, we are down one vehicle, we had an incident where one of our vehicles broke in there. Over the office and getting it, getting it repaired. Um, as far as personnel, we're actually, we're still, working about two-thirds of the staff, about a third short. But we do have some little, like, we have a couple applicants. And we are trying to, right now, trying to get a civil service meeting together. Trying to hire one certified and one uncertified officer. And the uncertified won't be able to immediately up to us because they're gonna make academy class not till January twenty twenty-five. And thirteen weeks of training, so it'll be about three years before he'll be available for.
There's a certified one on the front, let's see.
Ron Ford, he's going down to academy. But he no longer works for that particular, or he's certified, but he moved on for. Other than that, business as usual. Like I said, we're pretty much depicting our activities for the month. You have any questions?
We almost had zero dollars as it relates repairs.
Yes, ma'am.
To hundred and forty-six dollars, just for watching.
We're trying. Like I said.
The administration has ordered no breakdowns.
Good luck.
It's feeding, it's been eating us alive, not just the police department.
I'm not even that, just, you know, that's across the board, that's one of our, one of our problems, but anyway, go ahead.
The non-certified person wants to go through the committee meeting, will that person be able to start to observe or anything like that?
We'll have to go through a field trial process.
Okay.
Um, what we, what they're going to do is like go through the thirteen week process. When they come back, we'll put them in a, in a vehicle where our senior officer is kinda trained and teaching the streets and things of that nature. That's what keep the process, that's why I said about me twenty-five, I'm probably never gonna know, yes ma'am.
This wasn't one of the new vehicles, was it?
No, it was fairly new, but it wasn't one of the newer new.
Yeah, S and N?
We call them new from back.
It was a truck, from, it was a four pickup truck, I think it's maybe about four years old, I believe.
Yeah, estimate on repairs, sorry?
But the insurance is going to handle that, is that correct?
By the way.
Yeah.
I know the justice did come out, so we just went with all the paperwork.
Any other questions for the chief? All right, chief, why don't you just stay put there. Police committee, council member Burks Frazier, you got two items there. I do have a little bit of updated information, but you go ahead and give whatever report you wish to, and I can, especially about the dispatch, I've got.
You go first then.
Okay, I finally, this is the dispatch study that, you know, we did sometime back. The committees met at least a couple times, I guess, and talked about it. This has to do with all the amount of work that the city is doing for the county and for Hermitage primarily, those two. Now, y'all know the, the, the way this works, of course, right now, the city runs the dispatch center. And that includes nine-one-one for the whole county. And it includes, of course, our own telephones and, and even on, uh, all fires, we were, we were even answering the phone from the sheriff's office and several fire departments, rural fire departments, I mean, we, we're providing services to an awful lot of the county besides just the Warren Police Department, because the, the nine-one-one system is, is down there. I make y'all all know that, but I'm going for it for everybody to understand it. The county pays us seventy thousand dollars a year. Hey, that's been the figure for some time, to really provide those services, the manpower. But I, it's also the workload. It's the workload. It's a lot of paperwork and log work and all kinds of stuff that we have to do that, that if we were not running that system, we wouldn't have near that much for ourselves. So, uh, the city council and myself, we've been concerned that we need more money. Uh, I don't know how long that mount's been in place, but it's been there a good while, just like it is. Uh, I finally got to have a meeting with the county judge. We had, we had visited previously, he had indicated he was willing, uh, 'cause they get nine-one-one money. They get a good bit of nine-one-one money, but it goes to the county. Of course, then they pay us, you know, the seventy thousand dollars, but they, they keep a lot of it. Now, they have to keep some of it because they're responsible for all the equipment. Upgrades, replacements, anything like that has to, has to be paid, is paid for out of that money. Uh, and I think Alderman Burke Frazier, is that what this is about, this legislative authority?
Yes, sir.
Which shows, I think, how much money they're bringing in and so forth. But anyway, to make a long story short, I went over, uh, literally, he'd been out of pocket a while, but I got in touch with him today. Went over, had another set down discussion. And I told him, uh, I thought they needed to pay us about another thirty thousand dollars. He told me that he had taken a look at it along with his nine-one-one coordinator, who does work for him over there, and that they thought they could pay us another twenty-eight thousand. That was, I think it's seventy-two thousand right now what they're paying, so that would make it an even hundred thousand dollars that they were, he's willing to do that. So all we gotta do is amend our contract with them. And they will put in another twenty-eight thousand dollars. He told me that's as far as he could go right now. But he had no problem with doing that. So I, I tell you that, council members, I would recommend to you that you accept it. You're not gonna get any more than that, I'm just telling you. But that will help us considerably from a revenue standpoint to, to, to help doing what we're doing. Now, I've also mentioned, and I begin want everybody clear on this. I'm sure there's gonna be, after they're gonna try to build a new jail, I'm pretty sure at some point, I don't know when, that they're gonna try to build one. But we don't have a jail here, except our holding facility down here, where we gonna keep somebody twenty-four hours. And you'll notice in your bills later, we got more and more, we're having to ship out to other, other places. Of course, we have to transport them, pick them up, all this kind of stuff. Uh, even misdemeanor cases sometimes that we have to be put in jail for just short period of time. And, uh, he's told me that if they do get that done, and that's a, that's an if at this point in time, but if they build a new jail, he intends to put the nine-one-one system in that facility. And the ci- and the county take it over and run it. That's what he's told me, which they would have all the authority in the world do, if that's what they wanna do, only they can, you know, pay for it and so forth. Uh, that would free us up some in the police department from the standpoint of our workload more than anything else. We still gonna have to have people twenty-four seven, even at the police department, 'cause we still got our own radio dispatching to do. We still got our own telephones to answer, our, our regular local lines. It's not gonna get rid of people for us, but it would get rid of a tremendous amount of workload. It really would, which would, would help a lot. So I think the chief and I agree, if that comes about, and I can't tell you if it will, I can't tell you when it will or if it will. But if that happens, then, you know, we probably quit getting the money that they're paying us, 'cause they're not gonna pay us when they're, when they're doing it. Matter of fact, they'll probably hit us up for some, I would imagine. But, uh, they not, they don't, wouldn't have to do as much as what we're having to do right now, paperwork wise and all that kind of stuff, so. Just, just giving you a report, but my recommendation, council member Burks Frazier, is that, that y'all authorize us to put an amended contract together and take that twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's my recommendation, but to have y'all's call as a, as a police committee, so just want to pass that on to you.
Okay, so when we met, we discussed the, um, dispatch study and the purchase of cameras. And what you, what you have right here that the mayor held up that I had printed off for you today? It shows that, um, Bradley County gets one hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars for the nine-one-one. So if we ask them for twenty-eight more thousand and equals a hundred, they still have, you know, quite forty-five thousand dollars to, um, run what they need to run, their nine-one-one coordinator, and then also, uh, equipment and things. There's a reimbursement of fifteen percent for their new equipment, and then, um, also they get an equipment stipend. But for right now, the, we were just wor- we were just concerned with the dispatch study showed that we were getting kinda shorted. So I agree with the mayor that the twenty-eight thousand dollars, um, that we amend in our contract for the twenty-eight thousand dollars. I'll, I'll go with that recommendation. Okay?
You gonna make a call?
Do I do it now or do?
Well, that's up to you, I mean, but I, I gotta have a call.
I didn't know we had to have the, okay. I, I move that we amend the current contract for nine-one-one services with Bradley County from seventy-two thousand to one hundred thousand dollars, and it'd, and it'd be an addition of twenty-eight thousand.
It's really a dispatch contract.
Okay, dispatch.
More involved, it's just nine-one-one.
Okay.
But that would be part of it, yes.
Okay, dispatch study.
Got a second? All right, the motion and the second is that, uh, we are authorized to, uh, prepare, uh, a new contract between the city and the county. And I think it would make it for an even hundred thousand dollars of what it'd make it for, going from seventy-two to one hundred. And then, uh, along, you've approved it, all we gotta do is put it together and get them to execute it, it's done. We don't have to go through any kind of other action.
So that'll be the end of our dispatch study on the agenda.
For now.
For now.
All right, I don't think we've spoken yet. Any question or discussion?
What about the city appropriate?
Well, you know, they're paying us a hundred dollars. A hundred dollars a month, I need to talk to them as well, but that'd be between us and Hermitage, so we'd have to.
But I guess my question is, are we making contact with them?
Well, I, I have not talked to them yet, but I, I probably need to do that, yes ma'am. I was more concerned about getting something with the county as fast as I could, and then, and we can talk to them as well. Any other questions? There's a motion on the floor? Approve the contract as stated? Any question or comment? All in favor, show of hands? I see six in favor, thank you.
Okay.
Still got the cameras.
Yeah, the cameras, we are going to meet, uh, is it October twenty-third?
Believe that's right.
October twenty-third, and we have, um, the company flock. Cameras are coming down and they're gonna show, give us a demonstration of what they have to offer. Cameras are coming down and they're gonna show, give us a demonstration of what they have to offer. But it's a system of citywide cameras, right, chief?
Yes, ma'am.
And it'll be like, is it face recognition? Well, I guess it's what we want it to be, right?
Well, I don't think they have face recognition technology yet, but I do want to have a license plate reader and a digital camera.
Okay.
P D and add it on to, not like a citywide, but cameras be added on to.
And it's a large company. Moncello just implemented the Flock cameras, what, about three or four months ago? Maybe a little bit longer. So, we're interested in seeing what they have. And then, maybe next month, we'll have another recommendation.
We've kinda got a couple of options, just to refresh the council's members. I know the committee will look at all this. We've got another company that we got the proposal to put a lot of cameras in town at various properties and intersections and what have you, trying to get our eyes on things better. But, you know, we just don't have enough police officers. Even if we were full of staff, we wouldn't have enough to cover everything. The Flock system is kinda, it ties in with departments all over the country, literally. Now, everybody don't have it, but those that do, you know, if you have something on your system, they can see it on theirs. And it's a way to trace vehicles and, you know, that we're looking for and things like that. The other system is more of a, you just put the camera up and it records and we'd have it for our own personal use, city park, you know, anyplace. We think we need to put one in the public where we can watch what's going on, neighborhoods, what have you. And the one that's, if one of them can buy the camera, it's yours. And it records and we could also have a monitor where we watch live the dispatch center. The Flock system, you in effect rent them. Well, that's a better way to put it. They are much more expensive. You gotta pay an annual fee every year. More cameras you got, the more higher the fee is. So, it, but it is an excellent system, but it does cost a lot more. But that's something the committee's just gotta look at and see what they can work out. So, just trying to keep everybody informed of what we're looking at here. I think we need to do this some way, somehow. We gotta get more eyes out there just to deal with what we're having to deal with. Anything else, Adam Chairman?
The only thing else that we talked about was some positions that were open at the police department. And Chief Hildre said he would look into that about, not positions that were open, but rankings.
Oh, yeah.
And we talked about that.
All right. Is that it?
That's it for me.
All right, thank you, chief. Thank you, ma'am. All right, fire chief. Try to keep things rolling here. I know we've got a lot to do tonight. We still haven't gotten in to meet some of us, but go ahead.
Good evening. We responded to three calls during the month of September. Our couple of loved kids, they were all in four hundred and forty dollars. And we had our meeting on September 3rd, twenty-three members present. And we did some ladder truck training at South Law Complex. So, we have a busy month in August and slow down in September. We need to pick that up now in October. And we are under a burn ban and it is critically dry. So, talked about this morning in staff meeting and I will say this to the public. If you see anybody burning, please call. Don't assume that somebody has let up nowhere we know about it.
It is absolutely illegal to burn outdoors right now in Bradley County and I think forty-seven or fifty other counties right now in the state. So, we're trying to keep a watch at the police department. Everybody else is not all at night, although some of it is. And that's illegal under normal conditions to burn at night. But we still have people that do it. And we try to get out there and put a stop to it, to ignore it. So, feel free, public, if you've got somebody burning, call up to the police department, fire department, and we will send somebody out there. Okay? All right, chief, you've got this, where we're trying to collect our money on these fires and you've got a bunch in there. I see one that says, hey, by Farm Bureau, is any?
Well, one just, this week just came and picked up a litter in the fire department the last three or four days.
So, we follow it up when we need to on these. I mean, we need a yes or no answer. I know some of the insurance companies do it, some of them don't. Are we sending a letter to the insurance company?
Yes, they get it when they can pick up the fire department.
Just wanted to keep y'all informed on that. Okay? The toll break?
None at this time.
All right, thank you, chief. That's it. Unless y'all got another question, anybody? All right, you turn your page, you go to sanitation manager, this deals with our solid waste. Rob, can you give a, they got a written report.
Any questions, I'll be glad to answer. Meantime, we did thirty-three hours' work of trash litter pickup, walking and picking up. We serviced limbs at thirty-nine homes. And we serviced junk at seventy-five houses.
He says service, that means we picked it up, just in case anybody's wondering what that means. We picked up that many limbs and all of them to the landfill or whatever we had to do to dispose of it.
We are currently full of capacity as far as import. We do have one garbage truck down. It's not the one that's leased, it's one of our old ones that we run the secondary routes on. We got an estimate of getting it fixed for twelve thousand. We're working on another situation right now to not have to fix it. We're taking another truck out of a certain department and gonna try and run it for awhile and do cardboard a little bit different way. So, maybe we can get the funding for the transmission for the trucks that's damaged. But trash service is still getting picked up. The guys are doing a great job and just adapt what you gotta go with.
How many miles did the truck have on?
About eighty-eight thousand.
Eighty-eight thousand.
We just, you know, not many. Yes, ma'am.
The lot on Church and Rock Street, Miss Gwen Clark. Has that been, the mayor was gonna check with you on that one. It's right across from the baseball field.
It's been cut several times this year, yes, ma'am.
It has?
Yes, ma'am.
I hope we're talking about the same property because I've been out there and I hadn't quite found.
In West Church and Rock on the corner? Yes, ma'am, it's been mowed, I know at least three times this year.
Okay, I haven't been over in about three weeks and it was grown up at that time.
Yes, ma'am. It hadn't been mowed recently, but I know it had been mowed three times this year. Yes, ma'am.
Are we putting liens on that property every time we do that? See, that's what we're running into, council members. We go through the process to have property mowed or cleaned up, whether the case may be. And we go through the process, they won't pay the bill. And then, we put liens on their property. But then, in a lot of these cases, especially the mowing, in just a matter of a short time, it grows right back up again.
Y'all get it mowed again.
We're having to just continue to do it.
I know we mowed three times.
Yeah, I haven't been over in about three weeks, but she called and I know, every time she called, I know that's what it's about.
We'll double check again, make sure we're looking at the right place and talking about the right thing, okay?
It's over, you know where the new house is?
Oh, yes, ma'am, I know right where you can talk about the cardboard over there.
It's a very nice lot.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
All right, let's finish up. Any other questions for Rob? This is on our solid waste now. Let's do that first. We'll get to the building official part here in a minute, two different things generally. Council member Atkins, would you like to go over here? You got three items there that was on the agenda.
I'll let you give us the update because you already kinda told us about the grant.
I cheated again, didn't I, just a little bit? I'm sorry, I should've let you. Item F1, update on recycling grant. That's what I was talking about earlier when I said we have received a small grant, but we got one twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars from Southeast Regional Solid Waste Board that we're gonna use to put a, you know, we got one drop-off center. And that's down here by the fire department where people can bring cardboard. We're gonna have a container back there for paper and all that. We have to get that old container repaired, but where people can, mainly households, because we don't pick that up in, you know, in front of the houses unless people just have it mixed up with the regular garbage, and that's what we're trying to keep them from doing. Now, a lot of the rest, the businesses that are big generators of cardboard, we're picking that up because we can bail that stuff and sell it. Price goes up and down, but we get two benefits out of that. One is with, I was talking about when we honored Mr. Miller, it takes a lot of tonnage out of our garbage disposal, which we have to ship to either Eldorado or Ashley County, and they do not bury it free. I promise you, we're spending tons of money on that. And it's put our budget in a tight situation. The other thing is, we can sell some of these recyclables because we got this recycling center where we can bail it and all of that and anything we can get for it, something, you know, which is, and they'll come pick it up once we bail it up. So, we're gonna put another place, kinda like this and down here by the fire department, be out there near the west side, but we'll land the city already owns. And we'll, you know, we'll have a concrete pad and an easy way to access, drive up to it. It'll be for people to drop stuff off on the other side of town. That'll give us two of them. Hopefully in the future, maybe we can get some more around town. But that'll give us two drop-off centers. Then we'll continue to press trying to get as much of the commercial stuff as we can because it's a money thing. I mean, it really is. Now, as far as the, item two there, updates on solid waste program. You wanna go ahead with that?
Well, before you go into that, as far as, have we started our soft launch with the paper?
Not one hundred percent. No, ma'am, we're playing with a couple of places right now, just seeing how it's working out. So far, okay, so, but we're getting ready.
We're gonna be trying to pick some of that up where people can, you know, collect it, separate it for us, then we'll come pick it up. I'm talking about the school, the courthouse, the, you know, just places that generate a good bit of paper and cardboard. So, yes, ma'am. We gotta, we gotta get on the stick and get that going as much as we can. And some of the grant money's for publicity too, by the way. A little bit of it's for publicity so we can put word out, through the media and whatever sources we can to try to educate folks on this and get everybody to work with us. You want me to go on with the second?
Yes, sir.
If you wanna make any comments, feel free.
No, no, I wanted to make sure that we included that about the paper.
Sure. This addresses some of the comments, public comments that were made tonight. Let me tell you why the city's looking at changing. We're looking at making an alteration to our regular pickup system, our residential. Commercial, we'll keep picking it up. Commercial accounts pay more for their garbage pickup anyway. And theirs is gonna go up a percentage too. Because all of them, what's the absolute minimum on our business?
Forty.
Okay, forty. Residents right now are paying seventeen dollars a month for garbage pickup. And that goes back to 2017, since they've been raised, 2017.
There was a five dollar increase in 2017.
2017. The cost has gone up and up on equipment, maintenance of equipment. We are spending several hundred thousand dollars more a year on picking garbage up than our fees cover, which means we're taking money out of the general fund and even out of some of our cash balances, we've been subsidized. That's taking money away from the police department, the fire department, everything else that we, our city parks, everything. But we've just tried to do it and so we're looking for ways to cut that cost. And it will absolutely cut the cost and we will absolutely get everybody's garbage picked up. Part of the deal, and this is what the two dollars is for, the increase, is we're, if we go through with this and the council approves it, we will purchase every resident, residents, every house, apartment, whatever, and a lot of small businesses that need them, that don't use the big containers. We've tried to cut that back, those big containers back. And one of the reasons for that is garbage being hauled in from other places, from out the county. You're paying for all of it every time they throw garbage in those big containers. We can't police them around the clock. And so, therefore, we're hauling tons of garbage from residents of the county. And the taxpayers are worn, paid for every bit of it to be transported in landfill. Plus, people throw stuff in there, it's illegal, we got all kinds of problems. But we're gonna buy a fifty gallon, ninety, I'm sorry, ninety gallon container. And some people have bought them for themselves and use them. I got one, but it's, it tips back, old wheels, it can be rolled even full. It's pretty easy to roll. But what we intend to do, again, if we go through with this, is every person that lives in Warren will get one of these. It belongs to the city, but you'd be assigned to your house or apartment or whatever. The company that we buy them from, we're gonna pay for them, they're about seventy-five dollars apiece. So, we're talking several thousand dollars here on the front end, but we buy them over time, use the two dollars to pay for that. It would be assigned to everybody. And the company that makes them, that we're getting them from, will come in and go door to door and explain how to use it. And where the best place is to put it on your street. A lot of our streets aren't curbing good. It's not, as been mentioned, not so easy, you know, but there'll be places to put them. And our guys will still pick it up by hand. And I don't wanna get everybody excited, but for the elderly or the handicapped, people that do have trouble getting that garbage out there, if they will notify us, because we're already doing it for some people, we will go up to their front door or wherever they have to put that garbage and we'll pick it up for them and dump it. Now, we're not gonna do that for everybody that's able-bodied and capable because it would take us forever. But we're willing to help the elderly and the handicapped on that. We're already doing that for a few people. Probably don't know that and I'll probably get 500 requests now, but I'm just telling you, we've been doing that for years. And, but we'll continue to do it with this. The reason for the ninety gallon container, you can store a lot more garbage in there and we'd pick it up on Mondays and Tuesdays. We'll continue to run our grapple truck, the new vehicle we got that grabs limbs and junk and all that. We have quadruple how much of that we're picking up. Now, why we hadn't got by Ms. McCoy's place, we gotta find that out. I'm not sure why that's taken so long because we've been doing, staying ahead pretty good with that. Plus, helping us clean up a lot of these properties. We got so many junked properties in town. Way too many. People that will not keep their property and they're, they just won't do it. And I'm telling you, I get more complaints about that than I do about arresting people. That's honest to God's truth. And we're trying to address that, just like was talked about properties growing up and stuff like that. It causes problems, health problems, safety problems. So, we're trying to work on, we got a lot to do yet. I'll be the first to admit to you, a lot to do. But what we're talking about here is our regular weekly garbage pickup. So, each one of, everybody in town will have a ninety gallon container, just flip up lid. You can put a lot of garbage in. You absolutely gotta have more than one. We probably make people that's capable of buying one, buy, we may let them buy a second one to keep. We're gonna, we're gonna work with everybody and make sure you got enough container to keep your garbage. You're still gonna need to sack it up, but put it in this container, it'll keep the dogs out of it, the cats out of it. Now, I spoke to me dogs running free, but y'all all know as well as I do that they're out there. We're constantly chasing them. Cats, there's no law on that, there's plenty of them out there getting any too. That's a tough problem, but this would help with that if everybody would cooperate with their garbage in it and then, you know, pull it back up to your house that the garbage is picked up, don't leave it sitting out on the street and just start putting your garbage in there for the next week. We will get every piece of garbage you generate, just like we do now. We'll just pick it up one time a week. And what that will do is save us thousands of dollars. We don't have to buy any new equipment. We got the trucks and the equipment, but we won't have to put as many miles on. We got the trucks and the equipment, but we won't have to put as many miles on them. We won't have to, uh, have it, our repairs ought to go down. We got some old stuff, we got some a little bit newer. And fuel costs, just fuel costs. We can cut substantially of what it's cost us to pick garbage up. Now, that's an option. If we don't do that, I don't know what, we're going to be laying people off. Next year, early next year, we're going to be, and I'm not just talking about sanitation department. It's going to cut into our finances so bad, I don't think the chief will be able to hire four more police officers. That's how tight the budget's getting. We can make it work. We can save some money. It's not going to solve all of our financial problems, but it'll help a bunch. And the intention is to work the solid waste guys for ten hour days. So, that's still get forty hours a week, but we gonna, and then on, we're still running those other trucks, container trucks and so forth. Monday, I mean, excuse me, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is necessary. We are going to cut out overtime. One way or the other, we fix to cut out overtime. We're spending too much on overtime for all this other stuff we're, we're trying to do. So, we run on Saturdays for a lot of the commercial pickups. A lot of them have a lot of garbage. You know, try the Sonic or someplace, I'm just giving an example, places, food stores or there. I mean, they generate a lot of garbage. They pay more, but we have to pick it up more regularly. But we're going to try to get it where we don't have overtime paid, but still keep our crews. And then, as was mentioned earlier, we got a number of things we could use those guys to do on, on Wednesdays, Thursdays and Fridays so they can still get their forty hours, not Friday, but Wednesday and Thursday, so they can get their forty hours a week. We don't cut anybody's job out. They keep making what they're making as best we can. They're not paid enough, but at least pay them what we can. And as Rob said, I mean, we'll be out there on the streets picking garbage up. Y'all know we have a litter problem, every neighborhood I know about. I have to clean my corner up twice a week because of the trash that's thrown out there. So, and I know everybody else faces the same thing. I don't know how to solve that problem, but just go clean it up. That's, that's basically what we're trying to do. So, there is a reason behind all this. The committee has looked at this thoroughly, they vetted it, they asked questions, they dug into all the details. But this is a matter of saving a substantial amount of money and still getting your garbage picked up every week. There's only one other town in South Arkansas, one other major city, like what, city warrant size, that picks up two times a week, only one. Your county only picks up out the county one time a week. We're going to provide a lot more services because we're going to keep picking up the junk and the limbs and that kind of stuff because we got equipment. Now, we can do that faster with fewer people. And we're, and I mean, you're getting all of that for your current seventeen dollars right now, not just the two pickups, you're getting all that extra stuff. You don't pay for that. So, we've tried to think about this, I can, I can, from an administrative standpoint, I appreciate the fact that, you know, another two dollars is another two dollars. I understand that. And I know that's tough, but we're mandated by state law to have a solid waste system. So, I've had people tell me, I want to just quit picking garbage up. You want to have a mess, try doing that. First of all, I'd be in jail because the state says we will have a solid waste system. Every town's got to have one, every county's got to have one. But notwithstanding that, I can remember when we did have a solid waste system. And of course, everybody had a burn in the barrel, this just burned all of the garbage and everything else that we got, picking mess. The laws, you can't do that. I know you can get a permit, burn a few, you know, leaves and stuff from time to time. Just don't do it right now, not with the fire ban, okay? But there's a reason behind this and we're going to have to pay for it some way or the other. But right now, we're going in the hole, just doing what we've been doing. And it, and it's been 2017 since anything was changed with cost. So, what we were looking at is a way to try to get it, still get your garbage picked up, every bit of it, once a week. And then provide these other services and not have to try to, you know, keep raising rates. These trucks now, we can't even afford to buy garbage trucks. They're two, three hundred thousand dollars. We're having to lease them. And we're, right now, we're leasing equipment for approximately, this street department, sanitation department. I think I figured out we're paying something like twenty-five thousand dollars a month leasing equipment. But we're trying to keep good equipment when we, you know, if you can, you can sell it back to them after three years and get you a new unit. Or you can just keep it, but then it starts getting costly to keep them up. Equipment's expensive to, to operate. Council member Atkins, that's way too much talking on my part. I apologize, but I did want to let the public know why we're looking at this the way we are.
Thank you, ma'am, for the very detailed explanation. And thank you, Rob, for the proposal. Based on, and yes, the, the committee has done research, we've asked a lot of questions, but we also feel we want to keep this a committee and do some more research and ask some more questions, especially address the concerns that were brought up tonight. So, we're not moving or.
We're not going to act on the ordinance right now.
We're not acting on any, on ordinance, not if we're not tonight.
Now, that's fine, and that's hurt y'all's prerogative. But I will tell you, the longer you wait, the worse it's fixing to get. Because every month we're not doing this, we're going to be spending a tremendous amount of money out of the general fund. And I don't think we can go too many months into 2025 that you're going to be in a, in some pain, and not just the sanitation department. You're going to be in some pain in the police and the fire department because we are taking money away from them. But we will, we will postpone that until the committee's ready to, to act on it. Anything else, council member?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your committee's work. Okay, let's try to move on here. Building official, Mr. Johnson, this deals with building permits.
Yes, sir.
Can you report on that?
Copy of these building permits, uh, for November 6th, Denver. State building permit issued, permit fees of three thousand dollars, value of three hundred and four thousand. Uh, electrical permits number seven, permit fees of thirty-seven dollars. And nine plumbing permits, value of three forty-seven.
We're going to have some force here on some condemned properties, but is there anything else on building codes? Council members, you need to ask or comment on or anything? All right, this has kind of been touched on already a couple of times, but we, we've got four properties. This is item G3. We don't have any new ones right now, but here's, here's where we are. The four that the council has already ordered cleaned up, or at least action to be started. 1007 Phillips Street, that's Mr. Jacobs. I have visited with him personally. I visited with him yesterday. He has started a little bit of picking up the junk and the spare tires and the equipment parts and everything in his front yard. He's even doing a little work on his house because it's getting in awful bad shape. He had a piece of equipment he had been, I guess, overhauling for months. It's been relocated, but he's nowhere near through. But he promised me that he would keep working on it. And I think he's done a little bit. But I'm going to tell y'all, that's, that's never going to be where everybody wants it. The house is getting dangerously, dangerously bad shape itself, not to mention the property. But he has given me his word, he can keep working on it. And I'm just inclined right now, while he's done a little bit, to let him keep trying. We'll just, I told him he can set some stuff out next to the road. You know, stuff, I can't clean the whole place for him, but if he can get some of it, some of it won't stolen away, I, we'll, we'll get that on our pickup list. Try to help him. Rock Street, 504 Rock is the same situation. Little bit's been done, but it is awful slow. But they're not fighting us. They told us they'll, they'll, he'll keep working on it. I'm keeping in touch with him personally. Number seven, Southern Court, I finally ran the lady down that her father owns the property. She's supposed to be overseeing it. She told me she had taken the job, hadn't had time to go back and clean it up, so forth. It's, it's in bad condition. Property's in bad condition. And I'm, I'm talking about just junk and debris and an old car and all kinds of stuff. But she asked me if I would find somebody she might, could pay to clean it up. We're going to try to get, send somebody to her and see if that'll help her out some. Said she was willing to do that to maybe speed it up. The matter on Penister Street, we can't tell if anything's been done. There's been more stuff, no stuff, nothing, there's been more stuff all in. Looks like maybe fencing material, something like that, not exactly sure, but really been nothing done. Of any major consequence, I can't tell you, maybe something hasn't been removed, but major consequence, and we are catching a lot of heat from residents. So, council members, y'all going to have to tell me what, what you want to do. My proposal is, we file charges in district court. I mean, this is a major undertaking and we, for us to go out there and try to do it. I've talked to the prosecutor attorney, he's willing to do it. Also, what this means is, we just issue a citation for non-compliance with the law and go to court, let a judge say what's going to be done, what's not going to be done. That can include fines.
I think that's what we need. It's not fair to the neighbors that have to live, live next to it.
I, I, I mean, I, I don't really have to have y'all say anything else except tell me to go ahead. But if you want to do something different, if you want to drop it or extend it, or, you know, whatever you want to do, that's, the council's got that right to make that call, but.
Did the committee discuss this?
This has been pretty thoroughly discussed for several months.
No progress has been made?
Yes, it has. While you're having that, I'm making progress.
Well, I suggest y'all go look at it. Go look at it. Don't take our word for it. Go look at it. Well, we'll carry you out there and let you look at it.
Well, I was just asking, I mean, if there hasn't been progress made, that's not.
Well, it's not much of anything. It might have been something, but it's, it's hard to tell. There's so much stuff out there.
If you're going to do one, we have to do all three, in order to be consistent, all four.
We, we can, we can file charges against all of them, but it's, it's time to do something to be quiet about it. To the public, I mean, they, the, the, the general public in the community, citywide, want these places cleaned up. It is harming their property values. It's harming, it's har, harming. And what we're talking about is cleaning up junk and not running businesses out of these places. And we got a lot of them. I'm not, I'm not picking on any one person. We got a number of them. But I can only deal with so many at times administratively, so y'all, y'all tell me what you want done.
I say, my suggestion is to move forward on B, C, and D. Since you've only, you made contact with the Phillips Street.
A B, C, and D, he's been there.
But he's talking to me. At least he's.
There's been a little bit of activity on Mr., on the one on Phillips Street. Now, you go out there and look at it, it's still, but the house is just in such bad shape. That's, but he has removed, I mean, there was tires in the front yard stacked up, broken down equipment on blocks, setting, you know, and he's, he's done a little bit. And, you know, kind of shoved some of it to the back, I think, where you can't see it so much. But he's, uh, I, I've talked to him personally three times. And I went out there yesterday and talked to him. Got out parked, got out, went up and talked to him. We had a, and, uh, he's mainly mad at the neighbors that he says that he filed complaints, even to the point of a little bit threatening. And I just tried to come and said, look, don't, don't take that counter. I think he's just mad. But I said, look, you know, they got legitimate complaints here. We need to clean this place up a little bit. And I, 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 I think he is at least starting to make an effort. And I believe the other two will be at sea, but, you know, I can't tell you. I mean, they haven't certainly, they haven't got it all done, been moved yet.
I mean, maybe by us moving forward, saying, that's it, they'll start.
And we can, we can notify them that we're going to file charges if it's not done, say, in thirty days or something like that. And, you know, I, I'd, I'd give anybody a chance. But we've given and given and given chances and, and a lot of folks just ignoring us or.
Right.
Or, you know.
Calling our bluff.
Or it's just not following through to any degree.
I mean, if we expect Rob to do his job, we've got to give him the power to do it. My, that's my, I mean.
And, and I want to remind y'all, we are almost exclusively working off of citizen complaints. Now, we do have the authority to just go in some of these properties ourselves and occasionally we do that on, you know, something we run across, we just think needs it. But again, it's a time-consuming process. It costs money to the city. I mean, just to send out all the postage, folks won't even accept our letters. We sent, we sent, we're having to get to the point now, we're having to have the police department to serve the letters, telling them it needs to be cleaned up. Enough's enough. We're not asking people to spend a ton of money. We're asking them just to make their places not junkyards. And we're really not making anybody do anything to their houses. A lot of them are certainly non-compliant. But they're living there, we're trying to leave them alone and just don't have the junkyard. So, what's, what's council's orders? I recommend that we, we, we start filing complaints in court.
Do we need to make a motion?
I appreciate it if you would, if, if it helped me.
I mean, I make the motion that we move forward with the condemnation list.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there a question or discussion on the motion? What, what I would intend to do is notify each one of these four that if they don't get something done, give them at least thirty days to, thirty more days to at least get started with it, I think. And let us know what they're doing. And if they're not going to do that, then I will go to the prosecutor attorney and we'll file charges. We don't have enough money to go out there and clean all these places up and put a lien on the property that you may never collect anyway. Question or discussion on the motion? I know none of us want to be mean, but this, I mean, this, this just needs to be dealt with. All in favor, show the hands. I see six in favor. That's what we will do, starting in the morning. So, uh, thank y'all. Rob, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Hermsberger, you'd send him in?
It has been a very productive month, uh, very busy. Our paving is complete, uh, Kiffin Seale is complete. Those trees were, the hazel tree was a Kiffin Seale tree. It looked real well. It was double-layered. And then we paved Packard and Bryant, Lee Street and a portion of Pennington from Gannaway up to the top of the hill. And, uh, Myrtle from Park Lane, or South Myrtle, excuse me, from Park Lane to Bowie Street. They're telling me within this week, the sidewalk project on South Myrtle will be completed. They're, they're very close as of today. And, uh, we're hoping to wrap up the sidewalk over on South Bradley within the next week. Uh, that's a project that the city employees took on and, uh, we're hoping to get that complete just here shortly in, in the timeframe.
The sidewalk looks nice.
Yes, ma'am. It, it really does. Yes, there's a few issues, uh... Yes, there's a few issues to it, but the contractor is working with the insurance company to, or not insurance company, the concrete company to fix those issues. And we picked up a lot of trash, we filled in a lot of pothos this month also. This trash problem is getting worse daily, picking up trash and road ditches and stuff like that. That's about all I can report on.
Any questions for Mr. Hermsberger? And we're still working just individual complaints, you know, people call in, ditch needs cleaned out, potho needs to be patched, we hadn't found, you know, all that kind of stuff, and we're trying to work on those as fast as we can. That's a never-ending issue, but a legitimate issue, but we've just got to keep working on that as well.
They could direct the issue with Ms. Phillips, so the mayor will be...
Yeah, we're gonna, the issue there as far as the drainage again, is that one of the pro, we had it all designed, it's gonna be a pretty small little ditch, but one of the property owners said in order to give the easement, they demand an underground culvert be put in to drain the water off. Now, that could be done, but, but I don't know how that changes the, now I got to figure out what size pipe and how deep it has to go and will it flow. There's a lot more to put the culvert in than just saying go lay culvert in a ditch to support it to work. That wasn't what we planned to do, and that's not what y'all authorized, but I was gonna at least look into it and see what could be done, because they got a legitimate problem. We need to fix it.
And if we pave this area, it does need paving, I'm not saying it don't, but if we pave this area before we put this drain in, that's gonna cause an even larger flooding problem, because the water, if you raise it up here, that this water's gotta raise up, and the more water you got, the more flooding you're gonna have. We've got to have a relief, that culvert's back there, it's closed off, it's got no place for the water to go. So that was the issue with getting this ditch put in there.
But yes, ma'am, we will definitely follow up on it further, because I understand you're concerned. All right, anything else? Street committee, Councilmember Mosley, I think you've got an item there.
Yes, I do, the committee would like to make a motion that we'd had a lady to ask to have a street, the name of the street changed. We would, what we would like to offer her, she's agreeable with it, that we put signs on Abernathy Street in memory of Alice J. Henderson, who lived there for many years, to do it in memory of Ms. Henderson instead of changing the name of the street, because there's another Alice Street in town that would create problems, so...
Well, everybody has to change your address and all kinds of things, that's a lot to do when you change a street's name, there's a lot of things involved for everybody that lives there, but my understanding is the family is perfectly fine with this.
Yes, they are fine with this.
So we have a resolution.
I make a motion, we pass resolution number eight, six, nine, seven.
Okay, I got a motion, second, second. I'm gonna read the resolution, the resolution authorized City of Warren to dedicate Abernathy Street in memory of the late Alice J. Henderson, where as determined by the City Council of Warren Arkansas, an appropriate expression of respect and appreciation for the late Alice J. Henderson be added as a memory to Abernathy Street, be it therefore resolved by the City Council of Warren as follows, the Abernathy Street, the City of Warren should be dedicated in memory of the late Alice J. Henderson due to her history of residing on the street for many years. Note too, that this change should be implemented effective immediately pursuant to the emergency clause to be passed consistent with this resolution. The mayor and the city street department are directed to implement this resolution by the acquisition of street signs declared to the public that the late Alice J. Henderson's name be posted on to Abernathy Street, and the emergency is declared exists, resolution take effect immediately upon adoption.
Move that we adopt resolution number eight, six, nine, seven.
I think we actually had a motion, the second, we kind of...
Well, you actually read it and then you adopted motion, adopted resolution.
Second. All right, second. Okay, you've heard the resolution read, and what this means, we won't change the name of the street, we won't change the street signs, we'll update those if they need it, but we will post signs in memory, that the street's in memory of Mrs. Henderson, that'll be put out there at the different intersections. Okay, all in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor, thank y'all.
Can it just mention any emergency clause?
Well, I don't know that that had to be there, but that just means it's, because we don't have a published resolution like, yeah, so, that's okay, don't worry about it. Don't hurt nothing, but I, yeah.
Got a few more questions, Maria.
Yeah.
In light of Ms. Phillips' question, on the sidewalk on West Central, where we at on that?
That grant has been awarded, we've got the grant, we are in the process of it being designed by the architect, the engineer, we'll have to bid it out, of course, I don't know exactly what the timeframe is, but it's being worked on right now.
Okay, well, we included in, in the day grant money for the streets that's been lit out during the state, for certain cities.
You talking about three hundred thousand dollars that we got about a year or so back from the, the warranty dues by the highway department?
Yeah.
That's the one that they bid out, highway department's handling all of that, but just, you know, we not involved other than told them what streets to do. They turned down our bid, or the bids, they were bidding it along with some streets in Monticello, that's one project, they didn't like the bids, they rejected them, and say they're gonna rebid it first of the year. I forget which streets exactly it was, but we had, it was three hundred thousand dollars.
Cook Street, or whatever, Cook Street.
Yeah. Yeah. That's still to be done, yes, to answer your question, that's still to be done, and again, the sidewalk is a completely separate project, it's very similar to the grant we got, it's the same thing as we got down here on Myrtle Street, that that will run from the housing authority to Martin Street.
Okay, have we looked at that intersection of Brad and Ketter?
Not yet. We got, we got, we got to do that, we gotta get some, figure out what we gotta do exactly. That is, that is the next project for us, we're just starting to look it into, see what we can do. Thank you. Yes, sir. Okay, um, community agonizing development, Councilmember Marshall?
Okay, we had a meeting on October the seventh here at the chamber, and all the committee members went, was present. The first item on our list, we talked about the privacy fencing, um, it's kind of, so the citizens can know, there's all existing fencing, the big grandfather den, no fencing over six feet height, no, basically, we wanted to be visible for the street, for emergency purposes. We were gonna ask Rob to go and look at them on a case-by-case basis, so we can kind of inspect the property and the fencing as well, so I can make a motion that we approve that as well. We talked about it a couple of times, we'll get to act on the privacy fencing issue. Next, we talked about...
You wanna vote on that?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Let's go ahead.
Did you do it in the form of a motion? Form of a motion, yes.
Okay, motion made, the second, now, we'll have to bring an ordinance back to you.
Right.
But this will authorize us to do it.
Okay, go ahead.
So we're not adopting an ordinance, we're just gonna bring one back to you, okay? Question or discussion on the motion? All in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor, thank you, continue.
Next, item two is the city property on Main Street, you have an illustration in your packet, the color view illustration, and this is the Bryant building that was torn down, due to safety purposes.
Do y'all have that?
I don't.
I don't think you put another copy of that one.
Okay.
Yeah, but, yeah, I think y'all seen it before, but I hadn't, I didn't put that in there actually.
And here is an illustration of four different images, there's a few things on here that we want to go ahead and make some changes on, mainly the naming of the plaza, but Lockerbie did a really good job on giving us illustrations on concrete, equipment, all the different things like that, so it's not quite up to scale, but it's, it's a, it's a good illustration. So we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood as far as the shading, shade structure, a court, site to have benches, bike racks, bullards, flagpoles, ground cover, concrete somewhere in the neighborhood of around ninety-two thousand dollars. So we know that can change, or somewhere under a hundred thousand dollars is what we talked about as far as moving forward to have something done with that property that the city owns now. And we'll get some more information on that later when we have additional meetings.
Mister gentleman works for Lockerbie, so he'll come down and meet with y'all and talk about that further. Obviously, we don't have money to do that, without trying to find a grant or a benefactor that wants to donate a bunch of money to us to do it, but you gotta have a plan anyway.
That's true. Item number three is the culture center, and I'm gonna ask the mayor to give us updates on it, because he had a meeting.
No, I got one scheduled, got one coming up Friday, this is with the Development District, we're gonna have a, I guess, heart-to-heart discussion, are they gonna be able to try to help us find something or not that we can apply for, because that building's gotta have a lot of work done on it, we're gonna keep it and use it, and I think a lot of people want that done, a lot of people, for a lot of different reasons, that it'd be a good facility, but we're talking a lot of money, you know, good bit for us. And then I think y'all had recommended at your last meeting, that there was a company we talked to one time, that said they could hire out to us to find us grants, but they wanted a pretty hefty upfront amount of money, with no guarantee that they'd get you anything, and we just didn't think that was feasible, but my understanding was y'all wanted the administration to get back with them.
Correct.
And see if we could negotiate something that, and I, we, especially if they find us something that's usable, then we'd be willing to pay them a finder's fee, for lack of a better way to put it, and a lot, a lot of companies will do that, and see if we can work something out with them, and all I need y'all to do is tell me to do that officially.
Instead of the form of a motion, I make a motion that the mayor move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, item number four.
Wait a minute, motion second, I'm sorry, I'm sitting there going the next thing. That's on the floor, we got both, motion second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor, thank you.
Before she go, I'll ask a question, what about Kevin Smith with the grants book? Is he still in business?
Only if you want to buy life insurance.
Oh, okay, no.
Over in Helen.
No.
I talk to him every once in a while, but no, ma'am, he's not, he's not doing that. I may still call him and ask his guys any suggestions, so, good idea.
At one point.
Yeah, okay.
Item number four on our list, we talked about the Training Depot, which we know is used heavily, and that's what we like, but there are some things that need to be done at the depot, some restoration type work. We do have some deals, but what we've been waiting for, and we finally got it, was the restoration work, because we know that this is a part of a historic preservation, and that type of work has to be done up to code with certain, um, type of wood, type of specs, and all of that, so we did receive that, and that was September the twelfth, when we got that information. Also, then we got an email on October the eighth from Clements, that you guys have all this in your packet. It has all the different base bid, the specs, the additive, what needs to be changed, what type of wood needs to be put in, additive number two, alternative talks about the plexiglass that needs to be put over the windows to repair, repaint the entire building, the exterior, what type of wood, several things, recommendations, that's a part of this as well, with that type of stuff. So the citizens, what we need to do first is make sure the foundation is fixed properly and securely before we can move forward with some of the other things that we want to do, as far as the warming kitchen, things like that. But it was set up for bid, and we have one bid that came back, and in our meeting, there were some other things that we wanted to look at, to talk about, that we want to go ahead and replace windows right now, which that's on our list, of course, painting, exterior painting, so at that time, we had talked to the mayor about to go ahead and set it up for bid, to rebid it out, and right now, nothing...
Well, what I think we also talked about is the possibility that we're on a tight timeframe to use the money for the rescue fund. Y'all already voted to combine that with the money that you had budgeted for the old shop over at Park. This, what I suggested you do, so we could get moving on this faster, and besides that, if you get another bid you can't accept, then you're in real, real trouble, so what I, we can do this, I would like to call Miss, meeting of your committee, get Mr. Clements to come, and also the bidder on the job, the one that submitted, the base bid was seventy-five thousand dollars, and that's about all we've got. We can change up, negotiate within that bid we got, and y'all decide just what part you want to do and what part you don't. You can do some of the additive work and cut out, like there was a price for painting the whole building, we don't have to do that right now.
Painting the work platform over there.
And work out a budget for what y'all want done right now with our seventy-five thousand dollars, see if we can get that worked out with the contractor, get it under contract, and get things going, because we don't want to lose that rest of the money. Now, we're understanding that as long, this is federal money that we got some time ago, and we've been spending it for a lot of different things. We've about spent everything except that amount of money and a little bit for whatever cameras we end up doing, which can be done pretty fast, because all the street money's been spent, by the way, that was in there for that, that's, that's gone now, so...
In our meeting on October the seventh, and this is gonna be a combination, let me go ahead and get to the Old Street Shop. Item number five, the Old Street Shop building down by the, by the city park, all the environmental work has been done, the building, the ground is now approved for public safety, public use, we're grateful for that. The money that we had projected, budgeted, thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventeen cents is the remaining for the Old Street Shop. The remaining funds for the depot project is gonna be forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, and we add those two together, it's gonna be seventy-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and seventeen cents. We can make a motion that we combine those two remaining funds, the thirty-five thousand and twenty-five seventeen cents, with the forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, give a grand total of the seventy-seven thousand, and we can apply that to the depot restoration. Okay?
Would you include in that that we have the meeting and negotiate what y'all exactly want done with that seventy-seven thousand dollars?
We'll include that when we do get it with Clements and the other person.
Everybody, I'm sorry, that motion second on that, so that's to combine the two funds. Is there any question or discussion? Everybody understand what's being proposed? Okay, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you, six in favor.
The other part of that is on the Street Shop building, things that we can go ahead and get started working on, pressure wash the inside, restrooms, painting, lighting, things like that, so that should be usable for the citizens. This building is already sitting there by the park, it can be used for birthday parties, different events, you have already have access to parking at the park, so that's what we're trying to go ahead and do as far as the Street Shop building. Any questions?
I've already given the order, Madam Chair, to have this power washed on the inside, including the bathroom, see what kind of repairs we may need to make there, but to get it just cleaned up, we'll do it.
Clean up, new cobol, things, all of that.
Yeah.
Okay?
We're gonna do that internally.
Internally. The next item, we talked about the downtown trees, and I noticed that the mayor, someone from UAM was here.
Yes.
I saw you guys walking around... I saw you guys walking around on Thursday or Friday of last week.
Whatever day you get.
And this is a proposal to replace the trees on Main Street. There's a total of thirty-two that need to be replaced, but before we can do that, we have to have someone to maintain the trees. And I'll ask the mayor to go ahead and give us a report on it.
Yes, ma'am. We, we've run down the appropriate person within the forestry and natural resources department at the University of Arkansas at Monticello. Now, I wanna make clear they're not gonna come in and do the work and they're not gonna come in and, uh, you know, pay for it. What they are willing to do is act as a free consultant to us. And I, I'm supposed to send them, you know, we had a proposal on a certain kinda tree to put out there that I think was come up with with, uh, Ms. Mary Beth Fraser and I think talked to committee at one time. I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get him that information because he's gonna help y'all with information about what kinda tree he thinks. It'll be the same where we put all of them and what he thinks would, would be the easiest to maintain and take care of. He will give us instructions on how to do that and he will also give us instructions on when they need to be trimmed and, uh, this guy actually is part of the extension service, but he's headquartered at UAM, the forestry school. So it's not gonna cost us anything for his expertise. We'll still have to buy trees and have them installed. And if I remember right, that was about seventeen thousand dollars or something like that to do it all.
Seventeen thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars.
So once again, we're gonna come up with some money at some point in time, but at least get a plan together on that. He is willing to work with us.
Okay, make sure he gets a copy.
I, I, what he's, he's gonna get from it, yes. Just totally.
Do we have a ma, active master garden group in Bradley County?
I don't think so. I know what you're talking about. I know Drew County does and it's possible that some of our people here, I think a few of them maybe have been involved with them. I, I'd have to ask.
Other, other one, Mike Worthen.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think we have a Bradley County group, but we, he's involved, I think, with them over at Drew County. I, I mean, I find out for sure. I just don't know that all. Okay, go ahead.
Item number seven is the city flag to let you make a copy in your packet. We had several choices that were presented to us and after some illustration and changes, we noticed on here is a nice illustration of the city of Warren flag. They did go in and modify and make some changes and we have some tall ones on here.
I, I have one suggestion. This is y'all's call. This is me for a city flag. I think we could get two flags is what we'd get for the, this is all the flag banner company in Little Rock that, that's the design. Uh, it's up to y'all if y'all like it, but I'd like to have a lumberjack on it. I mean, an actual lumberjack on it. Now, I don't know, you have to do a little change in, I know it'd be big, but just a, that's just, that's just my thought. Y'all's concern then to make sure the trees look like pine trees.
Some of the times we have had.
Maybe, maybe a lumberjack holding the axe.
Right.
Like the one in the old gym.
I wanted y'all's, because I'll have to go back and tell them, you know, kinda tweak the design if we want that done.
I know it, that one flies in the tomatoes horse.
Yeah, it looks a little funky to me.
Pink tomatoes won't be denigrated on anyone?
It, it has tomatoes.
Tomato sitting on that stump.
I'm just saying, just say it's tall pine, the city of Warren tall pine.
Well, we could put, we could put pink tomatoes.
Tomato up there and just get, get on this one, it's on the other one I'm getting.
And I think the problem should be, I agree with that. Would y'all like me to go back and ask them to?
So add a lumberjack and then the Warren?
Yeah, pink tomatoes. All kinds, pink tomatoes. We're not gonna have flag made to y'all's authorized. It's okay, you're trying to figure out what you want.
Okay, item number eight is the food trucks and we're gonna get with Rob after his vacation, uh, to get some more information on what other cities are doing with the growing population of food trucks.
Yeah, so he's just back today, so we're, we're meeting tomorrow.
So we'll give him some time and we'll talk about that in our, in our next meeting. Item number nine is an issue that not just the city of Warren, but all the cities in the United States are dealing with. This is an ordinance for the city, for city facilities to deal with our homeless population, um, to allow no camping out or loitering on city property. And we're gonna get a sample from the municipal league. Do you ever get that?
That's, I don't have yet, no. That's what y'all will be received to do. And again, it would take an ordinance to, to adopt this and refresh y'all's memory. There has been a recent Supreme Court ruling that we have that authority. Big question about that in the past, but that we do. But that don't affect private property. Now, individual property owners can say you can't camp or stay on my property. If they tell them they can, there's not one thing we can do about it completely.
Item number eleven, that was in our meeting that we talked about, was, um, visiting with Ms. Linda.
Yeah.
Of course, it relates on the, the city website.
We're, we're working on some of that and we'll serve it and meet with you.
Okay. Any other comments from the committee members?
I'm not agreeing, but I got a comment. Uh, initially, when we applied for that grant, included associate first put out the specs and everything, we had a company out of CrossFit that done the initial work for us. If we're gonna go ahead on and do the, the bulk of this work, maybe they can come back and do some of the work piece-mill if they're still in business.
You'll have to reject the current bid.
No, I'm, I'm not talking about.
On something else and something else.
After we do the current bid, we can go back and get them because they're the one that initially did all those things.
We can do anything we want to as long as we keep it under bid.
Yeah, because they're the one that initially did it.
Absolutely.
Was it a piece mail?
Yeah, yeah. Little bit of things that we don't have enough money to do to stay local.
Yeah.
They can come back and do it as we have money for them to do it.
That all, Councilmember Marshall. You've been, you've been carrying a load, your committee members.
That's why we're on my basket.
We appreciate it. Councilmember Henderson, ladies and gentlemen. I've got some handouts for you once you get into the reports that I want to give y'all to take for further consideration. Go ahead.
Thank you. The ladies and gentlemen in the meeting have actually been meeting, uh, four different times, uh, as it relates to personnel, uh, policy review. And as I was, and I need to apologize to my committee because I thought we were gonna be able to make recommendations, uh, tonight, after I went back to actually review the current policy, I thought that I better look at the sample personnel handbook from the Arkansas Municipal League to make sure that we have been inclusive. And I ran into a couple of areas such as the Family Medical Leave Act not being in the air and so we will not be making a recommendation. And probably because we have so many changes and updates that we're going to do, we may want to have a call council meeting just to address the personnel policy. Uh, my intentions were first to just give you the page numbers, but that's gonna take a minute and a meeting like tonight, that just would not be culture. So, uh, we will go through the, make sure that we have everything inclusive in this and, uh, ask for a call meeting to do that. The rescue funds in your packet, you do have, um, the cash balances, but then when I look at the actual cash balance sheet that our city clerk shared, uh, number ten oh nine, I believe it was ten oh nine, no, I'm sorry, ten eighty-five on the cash balance, it is showing as of September thirtieth, two hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and nine cents. And then when we look at what is in our packet, there's a little bit of a discrepancy, uh, there. It had two hundred and fifty-three thousand six thirteen eleven. So, but that was as of ten seven, so.
Need to check that.
Yeah.
I can tell you the copy you got there is a hundred and fifty-five, two eighty-seven, ninety-four for streets, so we spent a little bit out of that already on some street work, but, uh, that's, that's all spent now, this, since this was even prepared. We, we received the invoice for all our street paving and so that money is gone.
Okay, so the one hundred and fifty-five thousand, two eighty-seven, ninety-four is, okay, so it's zero dollars remaining there. So we will make sure that we have an accurate, uh, report, but then when I looked at the cash balances in this, it just did not, did not balance.
We need to check on that.
It didn't balance itself. Okay, the next item is, um, land purchase. I have, uh, heard from some of you asking as it relates, uh, how we were going to move forward as it related to land, uh, purchase. I did forward to each one of you the email, uh, from, uh, the mayor as it related the twenty-twenty-five budget, um, the word dangerously tight, uh, was a buzzword that had stuck in my head. So mayor, since the committee has not met, would you please share?
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna step down and I'm gonna shift hands y'all, so I've, I've got, I pulled all of this together today. And some of this y'all seen, so, you know, bear with me, but the first thing I've got here.
And also, let me just come to the mayor's defense. According to state law, uh, a proposed budget should be presented to the council by December one. However, we have been accustomed to looking at the midpoint.
I've got something to give you on the budget.
Okay, uh, at the midpoint, but, uh, state law states December one, the council should have.
Oh, you're gonna have something faster than that, I promise you. Uh, but I don't think it's until a few other decisions are made, I, it's kinda hard to finalize it, no matter what I'm giving y'all right now, and you may have seen that, that is a proposed contract. Now, we're talking about the industrial property out here east of town. That's the subject. The hundred and twelve acres, whatever, something like that out there. Now, that is the original agreement that was drawn up for the city and the owner of that property to execute y'all decide to buy the land. Of course, we would have been borrowing the money from ADFA, but that would have been the agreement to purchase the property. As y'all know, we couldn't do that legally. We could not do that. We've been through all that, but I've got another handout here. This is a letter, and I think y'all seen this, but this is from the Friday Law Firm that we employ to help us, you know, work us through this thing. And it's, uh, as prepared by Mr. Shep Russell, if y'all know him, the premier bond attorney in the, in the state, uh, explaining what we can and can't do. And y'all, that's, I think that's the same thing, this mail. So, but I always wanna make sure everybody had it. I know been wanting to have a committee of the holes, I'm kinda using this to, to just give you all the information because it's, it's, it's coming down the shill time on this one way or the other. And, uh, then I've got another, an email from the Arkansas Municipal League.
And I did email all of this to all of the council members.
Okay, well, again, I'm probably giving you stuff, some of it you've all, most of it you've already seen, but I still wanted you to, hope I got that one copy. And, uh, I had sent the municipal league a copy, you know, rough copy of the lease agreement between the city and the BCDC, if we go that route. Of course, that's what Mr. Smalley was talking to y'all about when he got up spoke here in the public session, but this is from the league. Then I've also got a copy, which I think, again, y'all may, most of you may have seen, from the Bradley County Economic Development Commission, indicating that they are more than willing to, you know, go along, work with us on this to be the purchasing party. I know I've thrown a lot of paperwork on you, but I want y'all to see everything. Because again, this is very important. Uh, all right, that's that. And then I've got a letter from ADFA, basically endorsing the procedure that we've talked about doing with the, through the BCDC, telling us that that's okay with them. They have no problem with it. That's the bottom line. Of course, they would be the lending party, this would be a, you know, a million dollar And then I went back and drug out something else y'all seen before. This is the original amortization schedule for twenty-five years at three percent interest. Y'all find anybody that'll do that for you, please call me. I've got some money I'd like to borrow, so. Again, I know y'all seen that, but it may have been, been a while since you did.
I have a color copy.
Okay, very good. Here, here's the, the bottom line. Uh, we either gotta do this pretty soon or forget it. And, uh, the proposal, again, just to be, everybody on the up and up, uh, BCDC would enter the agreement with the property owner to buy the land. That would be them, not us. BCDC then would also borrow the money from ADFA. Now, we've done all this before, not quite this much money, but on spec buildings and other things. Then the city would enter a contract with BCDC to lease the land, which means the city would have control of the land during the time, terms of the lease. Of course, we'd certainly be working with them and trying to market it and so forth, but we would have the control of it and we would pay them the amount of money monthly for the lease for them to make the payment on the loan. That's, that's in a nutshell how it works. It would be an annual contract, one year at a time. We can't do a twenty-five year deal. They would do that. So worst case scenario, if after a year or two or five years or ten years, the city council says, we're not gonna keep leasing the land, then it'd be in BCIDC's hands and they'd have to figure out how to, how to pay for it or, you know, let it, let it go back. They understand that. Smalley, y'all understand that. I don't wanna mislead anybody. This will put us in the exact position we were going to be in anyway if we would have been able to borrow the money as a city directly from ADFA, except it'll be through the BCDC, but we'll have a lease to own the land as long as we keep the, the lease up annually, one year at a time. Y'all got the amortization schedule? You can see we really don't even start paying on anything till about twenty-twenty-six. Now, that's making an assumption, we got a potential company that may wanna buy about four hundred thousand dollars of it, the land, and if they do, of course, we take that money and pay on the note, knock it down. This is absolutely the best piece of industrial property anywhere near the city of Warren. There's no creeks on it. There's no flooding problems on it. There's, it's flat, a little bit of, of, uh, brush and timber here or there. Most of the timber's been cut off of it already. It's, uh, got a highway bypass that borders it and it's got a railroad track and that's what really makes it appealing for industrial development. Of course, you know it's adjacent to the property, the so-called Greg's property that BCDC already owns, where we have a major company looking at coming in and putting about a three hundred million dollar investment in and working fifty to sixty people. Now, that's not a done deal, but it's, it's in the, in the process and I'm telling you it's still very much alive. So I just kinda wanted to, what I, I'm asking y'all to do, I think it's the right thing to do. It's, it's, now, we can afford this, now, this, this don't change our overall financial situation in the city, but we can do this. If we don't do this, we're still in the same situation that I was talking about earlier, but we can handle this. And it gives us a chance to do one thing that we so desperately need in Warren, Arkansas, and that's bring jobs to town so we can grow, so we can see our income naturally growing. Uh, and I'm not guaranteeing you there'd be something built out there in six months or anything like that, but I'm telling you because the investment years ago out at the Kern Industries. out at the Kern Industrial Park in South Warren, you've got one new industry going on as we speak. Matter of fact, they're gonna test their first line Monday. And if it works, they think they'll have the thing rolling in two weeks. And they're gonna invite the public to come out, look at it at the appropriate time, and have a, you know, where everybody see what's going. Then they're gonna start building two more lines of production. And we're gonna end up with 20 or 30 new jobs out there. Decent paying jobs. They've already hired a few people, they haven't got it all stacked yet. But what I'm saying is, if we didn't have that facility out there, that place, we wouldn't have got this company. Well, it's the same thing with this, this land. This is excellent property. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna do economic development, it's hard work. Make no bones about it, it is hard work. You gotta be lucky every once in a while to find the right people to, to come in. These are all wood products companies. And y'all know why they want to come in, looking to come into Warren. We got the trees, we got the raw material for these companies. Now, there's still a major project pending at the industri, the intermodal facility. A big deal. That's in Drew County, but I guarantee you, it's gonna be a fifth Warren and Bradley County, two give it comes in. And it'll be bigger than all of these. It'll be bigger than all of them. But there's gonna be jobs. So, my plea with you council members, and I know y'all take this seriously, and y'all are looking at it and, and trying to do what's right for the city, and financially and everything, and we got a lot of things to deal with. But I ask you to please look at all this, and I'd like to have a call council meeting next week. And y'all vote to... Now, you want, until we get you the actual final contract, lease agreement with BCDC, and I, I, I need you to approve it and let us put that together, or approve the concept and let us get that finalized. And, you know, every T crossed, every dot put on the paper, bring that to you for absolute final approval. But I, I can't really justify doing that till you tell me you're gonna do it, assuming that everything meets your, your requirements. Now, I've told you the absolute truth, exactly how this works. You've got the numbers there in front of you. And, and we're gonna make, we can make this work, and we can make it work where the city will control the property. I know that's been an issue from, from the get-go. It's been an issue with me, and I know it's been with y'all. And so, but we can do that, we can accomplish both things. The BCDC will be the, it's one of the reasons they exist, to be a, uh, organization that you can do things like this through, that the city cannot legally do. But we still get the good deal of, again, 25-year loan at 3%. Be paid off anytime you want to. And of course, if you sell property, parts of it, or all of it, or anything to a company, you would take the money and pay the loan. But what we're doing it for is to try to get decent paying jobs to the community. I'm not trying to preach, but this is serious, and it needs to be done, it needs to be done now. But I did want to give y'all all the copies. I know y'all, again, seen a lot of it already. But please look at all of it, and I'm gonna ask you, at least next week, to, to... I'll tell you what, we're gonna mess around, and we could lose the property.
Mayor, how may I say so?
Yes, sir, you sure can.
I think from the go, we already been on agreement. That is, because we done went down and asked you to go back and renegotiate the price. The whole sticker part about it was when that could come to us and told us that we could do the money, and we was already had our concerns out on the table. So, if all, everybody's concerns have been answered, and we went to the lawyer, we need to go ahead and move this on off the table. Alvin Hirst said on her thing, and move forward and go ahead on, because all along, we've been for economic development and moving forward. We were just wanting to make sure we had all our ducks in a row and make sure that we didn't have another occurrence of what we had the last go-around.
Anybody have any questions to make? I'm not gonna belabor any further. Y'all got tons of paperwork, most of it you've seen before, but I just thought it was time at this point to give it all to you, lay it all out. I got the information from the league, from Mr. Russell at Friday Farm, because they're putting all this together for us. They'll put the lease together for us, they're working for us. Okay, they're working for us to put the lease together. I've, I've cleared it through Adfa, make sure they would accept all this, the way we're doing it. I got that in writing. That's not from Mr. Conan, that's from Mr. Chuck Caffey that handles these projects. He's saying guys making a sale on our building out here.
I make a motion, we go ahead and move forward this, and have a call council meeting, and go ahead and finalize this.
Is there a second? Second, all of council member mostly. Count, please, I'm, I'm not trying to shove anything down anybody's throat, but this, we stand to act. Now, this means I will bring a finalized lease back. Because what you got, just, you know, got some blanks in it, stuff, we're planning to have filled in.
Where, where would the money actually come from for the actual payments?
Well, let's just take it out of our, our, our regular funds.
I'll put it out.
Okay, all those in favor, show of hands. One, two. Okay, motion fails. Uh, I am extremely disappointed, the city council, and you, you, you chucked our economic development program. I was, and I, I don't know, apparently, y'all want out of economic development. And I'm gonna tell you something right now, I intend to let the entire community know it. I, I don't, I don't care anymore. I'm, I'm to the point, if you're not gonna do what's needed to push the town forward, I got a big problem. And that's what we're gonna have to do. So, I got two votes. And I'll be with the media in the morning, because that, this, this is wrong. And I'm not trying to be a dictator, but y'all have punted on the city of Warren. So, I'm done. And I guarantee you, I'm, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna make an issue out of it, because this, this is wrong, not to do what's... What do y'all suggest we do? What do you suggest we do? You've got all the answers, tell me. You don't. And I, I know I'm, I'm getting a little bit ticked off here, but we, we spent a lot of time. I, I, I'm just telling you, this is wrong, it's for some kind of personal reason. Somebody don't want to do this.
We haven't looked at a budget. How, how are we gonna plan to buy land, and we haven't even looked at the budget?
There's money in the budget to do it.
We're talking about laying people off, and...
Well, you're gonna get to do that anyway, if you don't come up with some more money. If y'all, y'all experts on the money, y'all, y'all let me know what to do. If we don't do some things to grow the economy in Warren, then you're not gonna worry about the rest of it, quite frankly. You're not gonna worry about it. That means the street paving, that means the police department, that means everything. So, okay, fine, that's the way y'all feel about it?
It's not like, to me, if I'm the steward of money for my ward, then, or whatever. And we've heard, we don't have, you know, we've gotta do this to save money. We've got it, if, if, if it was personally me, I wouldn't go out on a limb and, and spend that money right now. Maybe after we look at the budget, and we see where we can cut.
You won't have the land left. The, the owner says either he's ready to move, or they're gonna pull it. So, that's, that's fine, that's fine. You, you said where you stand?
Well, no, I...
Yes, you have, you've said where you stand. You're not gonna, you're not gonna work for economic development in Warren.
That is not what the council is saying.
Well, then, give me another solution.
Then we have to have a meeting so we can discuss it logically and sensibly.
You have discussed it, and discussed it, and discussed it.
So, we have.
And you've got all that information, and I guess you don't trust me, I understand.
All the men toe-free made a motion to have a special call meeting.
He made a motion to approve the concept and let us bring the lease back.
You wanted to move forward, but you said a special call meeting.
From next week, yeah.
Okay, so maybe the mayor didn't hear you say that, but that's what you stated. You wanted to move forward, just like I said, move forward with things under...
So, so...
And you said a special call meeting.
All right, so, so the motion was simply to have a call meeting to come back and make it, which is what I thought I recommended in the first place. But I, I thought he said to go ahead and prove it. So, you want to shut down right now?
Order of the day.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I'm, I'm disappointed. I am disappointed in where this city's headed. And y'all, 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 y'all answer for it. Okay, we got, uh... Go ahead and correct your report.
The next item is the water and sewer rates. Have we, I know you were trying to schedule a meeting, but have we found out why the increase was requested? Is it for operations?
No, ma'am, but I'm, I'm pretty sure y'all not gonna prove nothing anyway. But the fact, the fact of the matter is, the fact of the matter is, we haven't been able to schedule to get the people down here from the rural water development. They've been tied up with hurricane relief and all kinds of stuff they're involved in. The, the idea was to have a meeting of the whole, again, and let them come in and address that, and we'll still do that.
And the next item is the Arkansas Municipal League Defense Fund.
You got a copy there on that.
I move that the city of Warren approve the amount of $20,488.09 for the Arkansas Municipal League Defense Fund program.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the AML defense program. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye, or show your hands, I'm sorry, show of hands. Six in favor. And the 2025 budget, I have, uh... I'm gonna hand you this out, Rob, come here and hand this out. Now, this gonna have to be tinkered with some more. This does include the, all the things that we currently have under contract and everything.
It doesn't include a 2%?
No, ma'am, it doesn't. And even...
What about the tenure bonuses?
It does not contain anything like that. I, I know there's some things that can be added to it. Matter of fact, it's a deficit budget on the street department, so y'all can forget about paving streets in the future. To amount to anything, one or two maybe, one or two.
This ends my report.
Parks and conditions, parks and recreation, you've got, Kyle is out coaching youth sports tonight. Got a report, his reports in there. Planning commission, you've got minutes of their meetings. Uh, water and sewer. Oh, well, we don't have an ordinance, do we?
No, it's actually a special use permit.
Well, we got it, we don't, then we have to act on that. Special use permit.
Is that for them?
Uh-uh, it's like mobile homes.
No, it's not a mobile home.
I know, but it's a, a mobile...
Food truck.
Yeah. Well, we still gotta have an ordinance, then, if we gotta do that. I didn't think we had to. What, what he's, what he's talking about, we had a request for a, a cha, a order, uh... zoning change, but it was for a mo, it was for a food truck. And I didn't think, I thought it was okay to, it was right in the middle of a residential neighborhood, which is okay. But if you rezone the property, that means gas stations will be put in there. They decide they don't want to keep the, the mobile food truck. So, the planning commission just voted to just give them a special use variance, so they could put it, and went through all the process, everybody, neighbors and all that, and to put it, so let them put it in there. But if they ever quit, then it's not zoned commercial, so that they can't go in there and just build, you know, an all-night food store or something like that. So, council, it depends on what y'all want to do. We gotta, if we have to prove that by ordinance, then we gotta get an ordinance drawn up.
Right, right, it has to be approved.
Not till we get an ordinance, they have to adopt the ordinance. Well, that's, that's my...
They didn't know, they'd never done this before, especially before this type of... They didn't want to rezone the property for that, and so they all talked it over, and they wanted to let him have a special use permit, as long as he owned the property, and he had a food truck only, that he could do this, just for a special use. And that's something that had never been done, as far as this is concerned, so it's kind of new. So, that's where we're at.
I would think an ordinance would be required for this.
We can do one, it's not a problem.
Okay, we, we, they didn't know, and I didn't know, because this...
Is that your take on it as well?
Well, I think something needs to be drawn up.
Right, needs to be in the minute somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
I would think an ordinance.
Okay, we'll just have to bring one back to you, that's all right. We'll, we'll get together, get one put together. All right, Aviation Commission, no meeting, water and sewer, you got their report. Housing Authority, uh, minutes, cultural center report. Municipal roof building, uh, municipal building roof. We'll come back with you on that. We've got some announcements. Uh, Fall Festival, we've already mentioned that. Municipal building in November the 11th, bourbon of Veterans Day. And that, that means we'll need to move our council meeting to adjourn the next thing.
The 12th?
Yes. Make a motion, move the meeting to the 12th. Motion's made and seconded, question or discussion? All those in favor, show of hands. That means Veterans Day will be on that Monday. And then, just letting you know, the holiday schedule for November for Thanksgiving. We got the bills for the month, past month. Make a motion, pay with. Motion's made and seconded. Question or discussion on the bills? All in favor, show of hands. I have six in favor, is that correct? All right, and, uh... Guess that's it. We will call the meeting adjourned.